Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Sherborne School Committee meeting to order. Today is September 24th, 2024, and we are meeting in the Dover Sherborne Middle School Library. The time is now 5:31. In addition to our wonderful Sherborne School Committee members, Kristin Aberle, Becca Hammond, Megacarialla, and Nathaniel Jackson and myself, Christine Walsh, we are absolutely delighted to have our Metco liaison, Kimberly Grant, joining us via Zoom. It's great to have you here tonight. Kimberly, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda, we have community comments. We have provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person this evening. Are there any community comments? Anyone in the Google Meet? Okay, I do not believe we have anyone. So next on the agenda is Superintendent Comments. Superintendent McCoy, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you. I'll be brief this evening, as I did give a pretty extensive overview of the opening of school at our joint meeting a few weeks ago. But I do want to stop and thank Principal Gullingsroot and Assistant Principal Ryan for a successful opening of a school and all of our faculty and staff. Denny and I have both been in classrooms and been in the building, and already there's so much joy, as usual, in Pine Hill School, but the routines and the independence that we see with our learners already so early in the year is just wonderful, and it makes for a great year ahead, I believe. And Assistant Superintendent Conklin and I will be attending all school meeting on Friday to say hello to the kids and remind them that we'll be visiting classes to see what they're learning throughout the year. Congratulations to the town of Sherborne for celebrating its 350th anniversary or birthday. I had the opportunity to attend the Fire and Water event on Sunday, which was fabulous, and I know there's additional opportunities and events for the community to come together. So congratulations to Sherborne. I know that Principal Gullingswood will give updates when we get to her school improvement plan, but at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Conklin to give some updates on curriculum.
All right, let me go into presentation mode for our Google Meet friends. Yeah, right. So just wanted to give a quick teaching and learning update now that we are starting the school year. So the first thing, last time we were talking to you all was about the approval for the new math curriculum, and we are off and running on our new math curriculum reveal. So we had a lot of professional development over the summer, so McGraw-Hill came and did two professional development days over the summer for our teachers. Additionally, we gave our staff self-paced workshop days so they could explore the resources on their own, and also drop into various webinars and self-paced options that were available over the summer. And our math coaches right now, so we have one in Sherborne and one in Dover, have been working really, really hard, supporting teachers, planning professional development for the year, and we were very, very lucky to have a math coach at Pine Hill to really support teachers on the ground, and it's everything from teachers running in in the morning saying, "I need to find tangrams for this lesson," to figuring out the larger essential questions for each unit. So Lindsay Weiner at Pine Hill has been working really, really hard, and the teachers are really excited to be working with her this year. So far this year, our focus has been on creating a growth mindset relating to math identities and getting into the new routine of lessons. So most of the classes have finished their first unit, which was called Math Is, which is just thinking about setting the table for the whole year and thinking about what is my history as a math learner, what are words that I would use to describe myself with math. There's a lot of excitement and enthusiasm around math, and I've been in classrooms too, where students have said that they don't look forward to math, or it makes them nervous or it makes them anxious. So this whole unit is really to create this positive math self-identity and make sure that students know that there's all sorts of ways that they can engage with math and be good at math, and I think that's going to lead us really well into building these math identities for the rest of the year. One of the things that math and this new curriculum have been able to do for us this year is they've allowed us to really focus professional development, so every early release that we have this year is going to be spent on math. So everybody, the general feeling is that we're all in this together, let's all hold hands, and it might be a little bumpy at times, but we're here to support each other. So I think that's the feeling that I've seen in both of the buildings so far this year. We had our first early release last week, and the focus on that was on math talks and number routines. So again, our math coaches planned that. For people in the community that are interested in learning more about the reveal math curriculum at Open Houses this week, starting a little bit earlier, around 5:30, we're going to be doing information sessions on the new math curriculum. So if parents and caregivers have questions, or they're wondering how they can support their students at home, those are great information sessions to learn more about the curriculum. We'll also be recording it, and we'll share that recording out with people who can't make it because it's a long night for parents and caregivers to be out. So we can just see some pictures from our math curriculum PD. So last week, teachers, just like we want to differentiate our curriculum for our students, we differentiated our PD for our teachers, so there were a lot of choice boards, there was a scavenger hunt, we talked about number talk hand signals, so you might hear kids talking about these at home, but there are ways for students to indicate where they are in their math thought process, so that students can go, "I'm thinking, I have one, I have an answer, I have more than one answer," and then a lot of the students have already used "I agree." But one of the things that's nice for teachers is that when they pose a problem, they don't have a bunch of students with their hands raised. It's more of a way for students to not feel as much pressure if you don't know the answer yet, for students to all engage and have access to the math discussion that's going on. So some pictures, there's our math coach leading a lesson. So Lindsay Weiner, our math coach, has been in a lot of the classrooms, especially for a lot of our new staff, modeling lessons and showing teachers kind of what these number routines look like. And I just wanted to provide a couple examples of what the math curriculum looks like right now. So one component of every lesson is called Be Curious. This is kind of a hook into the lesson. It's a way for every student to participate in the math talk for that day. So there's never any right or wrong answer in the Be Curious section. The focus is on getting students to talk with one another, to share their ideas with one another, and that gets into that idea of having a positive math identity. So this is one that we see a lot, which of these things doesn't belong, and students think about which one of these shapes they feel like doesn't belong. They will often turn and talk, or maybe they'll go to four corners of the classroom to show where their thinking is, and then they have to justify their answers. Sometimes we ask students, even if you didn't pick the first shape on the top right, can you explain why you think somebody else in the class might have picked it? What we're trying to do is really get students to realize that there's no one singular way of thinking, especially in math. Sometimes there's a lot of different ways to get to an answer or different answers or different strategies. So that's a component of each math lesson, and it will kind of transition into the main focus of the lesson. This is another example of the Be Curious, again, which of these things doesn't belong. I did this with some teachers last week, and the first thing that came to mind for me was the dimes, because my head went to, "Oh, that's 50 cents, and the rest are all 25 cents." Other people went to the pennies, because that's the most that were there. Some people went to the quarter, because there's only one coin there. So you can see the way that this is inviting all students to be part of the math lesson and part of the math conversation. Another big piece is number routines. So this is to build students' fluency in math, to get them talking about numbers and to get them talking about various strategies. So at first, this problem looked very simple to me. There are three red blocks, eight blue blocks, and eight green blocks left in the bin. How many blocks are left in the bin? So like very kind of narrow-minded, Denny, I was like, "Well, three plus eight is 11, and 11 plus eight is 19," so that's how you get the answer to that. And then I heard a student say, "What I did is I took the eights, and I broke them up into fives and threes." So I knew that five and five plus 10, and then I knew that there were three threes left, and that equaled nine, so then I added the 10 plus the nine. Not where my head went at all, but it was just a great example of how we're able to show students that there are multiple ways to arrive at the same answer. So this is what we really were hoping with this curriculum, that we are going to have these discussions and have students be able to be part of these math talks, and we're really starting to see that so far. This year, we're going to spend some time thinking about how are we going to monitor how this program is going? So here are the metrics that we're going to use. One of the things that we're doing this year is giving students a universal math screener that would pinpoint any kind of gaps that we see in their math understanding. We're continuing along with iXL as a form of math diagnostics, and those give us dipsticks throughout the year of how our students are doing and whether they need some extra support in different areas in math. We have another new diagnostic this year called Math Fact Lab that's really all about number routines and numeracy. Obviously, we'll be looking at some of the larger measures like Math MCAS scores. We'll be talking to students and trying to gauge where their math identity is from the beginning of the year until the end of the year. We have formative and summative assessments that are part of the curriculum. We'll be tracking Tier Two and Tier Three interventions to see, is this math curriculum having any impact on the number of Tier Two and Tier Three interventions that we're seeing students need? Clearly, we'll be doing observations and walkthroughs to see these programs in action, and then we'll be gathering feedback from teachers at professional development, building meetings, and through some more formal means when we get to big winter. So hopefully, we'll have our initial gauge at how the program is going, and then we'll be able to, in the spring, make some decisions about if there are any tweaks we need to make to the curriculum for next year, things that we might change, because it is a really big learning curve this year. So I think we'll have a lot more answers and some a lot more questions probably too in the spring when we look at these metrics altogether. So that's an update on the math curriculum. The last update I wanted to give was on our ELA curriculum. So we had a great literacy presentation from our literacy coaches last spring, and in it, we talked a little bit about our elementary ELA curriculum review. So you can see in the graphic up here, we use DESI's process for evaluating curriculum. So step one is learn and prepare, step two investigate, select, step three launch, and step four implement and monitor. So we are in learn and prepare, this first phase of the curriculum review process. This year, year one, is going to focus on these two big questions. So what do we value in an ELA curriculum or an ELA program? What does the research suggest are best practices in regards to ELA curriculum? And in order to gather this information, our ELA coaches are going to be working, and myself are going to be working on the research piece and the best practices piece, but we'll also be giving surveys to teachers, staff, students, as well as sending out a survey probably sometime in the winter to parents and caregivers, asking them, you know, what are some of the components of an ELA curriculum that are important to you as a parent and caregiver? So we'll take all that information to launch into next year, so this will start in the summer and into next winter, and we'll try to answer this question, does our current curriculum align with our values, with the current research, and with the mass frameworks? And does the data that we have indicate that our curriculum is successful? If the answer to that is yes, then it will keep our current curriculum and make the necessary adjustments to it. If the answer is no, we'll move into the next phase of the curriculum review, which will be beginning to research other types of elementary ELA curriculum programs. So hopefully, by midwinter 2026, we'll have some idea of whether or not we're going to stick with our current ELA curriculum or whether or not we might be looking for a different curriculum. So that is my quick little update on teaching and learning. Happy to take any questions or comments people have.
Thank you so much, both of you. Any questions from Nathaniel, or Rebecca, or Kimberly? So Denny, I have a couple of questions about the math curriculum. First of all, I just want to thank you so much for doing all of this incredible work, and I never realized the importance or even the existence of what math identities are. I think it's just, I've always recognized it as narratives that we tell ourselves in the backs of our minds, like, "Oh, I'm not a numbers person." But I think it is incredibly important that math identities are identified and developed. I'm seeing, you know, some students as young as second grade, third grade, sometimes telling themselves negative personal narratives, like, "No, numbers are not for me, I don't like math, et cetera." So thank you so much for really digging into that and looking how we can develop their math identities. That's so incredible. And then for the info sessions, I know you're making recordings. Are they going to come out through Parent Square?
Yes, through Parent Square.
Perfect. And then I'd love to know a little bit more, are all of the teachers and students using the math hand signals now? Is this something we might want to work on at home, or?
It should be universal, both buildings PD focused on the math talks and the math hand signals. So I think that you'll probably see them a lot in the earlier grades, but it really is a K through five thing that we're trying to push through. It's something that we've had, one of the great things we had is we had a nice planning meeting with the building leaders in both elementary schools to talk about the math curriculum. So we put together kind of this list of look fours, that if you're going into a math class, a math lesson at the elementary level, what would you be looking for? So math hand signals was one of the things that kind of administrators agreed on and that teachers know we're going to be looking for as well.
And I was just in a fifth grade classroom this morning, and all the kids were using it. So even in the upper grades, they're definitely adopting it.
And I think too, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like maybe motions like down here might not, like if Kristen was like, "I know, I know," and I'm like, "Oh, I don't know." It's very obvious, because Kristen's got her hand raised, so it might help with self-esteem and building that math identity. All right, great. Glad that I kind of get, excellent. Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions around anything that Superintendent McCoy mentioned or Assistant Superintendent Conklin?
I just have a question, Denny, about the timeline for the ELA curriculum. I know we follow the DESI program. Is that, is a year for each of those stages DESI recommended? That seems like a long time, and I'm just curious why it takes so long?
Yep. So it's usually, in other districts as well, a five or six-year whole process. So when you think about the math curriculum, this is a journey that started before I even arrived here, Assistant Superintendent McCoy had begun. So it is that first step of like the needs assessment, and then it takes a while to get through everything. You know, there are ways that you could speed it up, but I don't know if you would get the buy-in from teachers and the community if you did speed it up. And also, realistically, we are just adopting math this year, and I think that it would be a big lift for our teachers to jump right into an ELA curriculum adoption if we move that direction really soon. So I think that the process that DESI lays out actually helps buy us some time and make sure that we're implementing math well before we jump into ELA.
Got it. And I just want to make sure, because, you know, I don't have an education background, but this is generally standard practice to phase these things out, so that we're not overwhelming teachers and kids and all that. So that is correct? My understanding is correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Becca. Anyone else with questions or comments? Excellent. All right. Thank you both so very much. We're going to turn it over to Dawn for the financial reports.
Good evening, everyone. In your packet, you have your, first of all, your approved warrant report. We're catching you up through fiscal year '24, and then everything that was processed during the summer up until last week. Again, if you ever have any questions, you can always stop in Central Office to review the backup, but it's also at Town Hall. And we sort of give you the fund and the type of expense, just to give you some insight as to what the type of expenditure was that was being processed. Next up, we have tonight, actually, two sets of financials for you. The first one is bringing you to closure for fiscal year '24. It's pretty much in line with the statements that you saw in June. We had obviously some positive salary savings. We had a little bit of savings and expenditures, and where we sort of deviated from our budget materially was in our out-of-district. So we were over budget out-of-district, a total of $163,000. You will see that we covered part of that cost through using additional circuit breaker funds, and then part of it was absorbed because we did have savings in district. So at the bottom, just for those people new, you'll, to really get your total out-of-district, you need to take what's in the main statement and add it to the total charge to circuit breaker, because we budget part of our out-of-district directly to our circuit breaker fund, which is reimbursement we get from the state the year, the following year, for out-of-district tuition cost. So trying to explain that a little bit clearer for some of our newer members. And so we were fortunate to have a little bit of reserve in our circuit breaker. If you remember, the year before, we actually completely wiped it out. This allows us to be able to absorb some out-of-district, unbudgeted out-of-district costs without having to go back to the town to ask for additional reserves, which we've had to do a couple of times during my tenure. So it's nice to have that safeguard. So you will see then, that if you look at your special revenue revolving funds balances as of June 30th, we're maintaining about $121,000 in circuit breaker. So that sort of is a nice cushion. That could be equal one unexpected placement, that could be multiple things, but that's a nice amount. That is the maximum that we can carry. So you will see that we had to take some out of circuit breaker that we had put there and put it back into the operating fund, because the most we can keep in a year is what Sherborne, just Sherborne alone, received in circuit breaker at the elementary level from the previous year. So you're allowed to keep one year's worth, and because of our unusual situation where we have the three districts, any student who is from sixth grade up to 22, that circuit breaker actually flows through the region back to the town, so you don't get credit for that circuit breaker. So even though you receive a lot more circuit breaker, we're limited to what you receive just from your elementary placements. So that's a number I have to make sure that we don't go over. So I had to pull a little bit back from what we presented in May to make that equation work. But it's good to have that. So that is where we stand. Any questions on the wrap-up of '24? And like I said, it's pretty much, we're within like $10,000 of the statement that was presented in June.
Any questions for Dawn? Dawn, thank you so much. Thank you for keeping your eye on all of these moving pieces and ensuring that we're in compliance. It is no easy task, and we recognize that you do so much for this. Thank you so much.
So I've also presented for you sort of our first look at fiscal year '25. I'm going to be traveling your next meeting, so I did it to help me, but also to help you, presenting your financial statements as of September 17th, which is the last, when I prepared this report. It pretty much does capture everything that we know for expenditures right now. We've encumbered all of payroll that we know, knowing that our substitute costs will keep going, our custodial overtime will keep going. But I think, you know, we do have some shared employees. We were able to capture all that into this. You had a lot of, at Pine Hill, we had a lot of staffing changes, and we are seeing a financial benefit from some of those. So some of those numbers that you see, they're a little on the large side, size for payroll savings, our majority of those are going to roll into your budget making for fiscal year '26, which is good, right? So we're already, we're going to have savings to offset some of the salary increases. We won't see, hopefully, quite as large of a increase in your budget for fiscal year '26. So seeing as that, actually, when you'll see me next in November, we'll be presenting the fiscal year '26 budget, I wanted you to have these numbers to start thinking about and seeing the impact that they will have as we start working on '26. The expenditure, so that's the salaries, the expenditure part, obviously, we're spending all year long, so you'll see that number go down. But there's no surprises in the categories where we could anticipate some surprises. We're a little bit over right now on textbooks and classroom instructional technology. The way that we had budgeted the math between the two elementaries, we needed a little bit more in Pine Hill than we had when we did the real split, so that's really affecting that. In classroom instructional technology, you saw a lot of the things that Denny talked about that we are using as additional tools for the math curriculum. That's things that, they weren't big, but those are things that we did not necessarily have in the budget, so we will incorporate those into the budget next year. And we also expanded some of the assessment tools that we use. Some of them we only use K3, and now we're using K5. So we wanted to move forward with all those things that were going to make an impact on student learning, and we will find other places for savings to be able to accommodate that. So those are two points I wanted to make. We'll also make sure we build those into the budget for fiscal year '26. Out-of-district, so it's still a little early to be confident with these numbers, but right now, the number of placements that we have is the number of placements that we budgeted. Some of the differences are obviously placements and changes in placements might change, that there might be a higher cost placement. So we are seeing, one of the categories is positive, one of the categories is negative, that's just a change in where we're placing students. There are some additional services in addition to tuitions that we haven't encumbered all those yet, so don't get too comfortable that we have a savings yet. I don't want to mispresent that. But where we do know, we're looking at a negative variance is in transportation. That is a result of changes in placements that gave you more miles to be traveled and some additional services for students who are being transported, monitors and such. So I'm hoping that number may come down, because sometimes those situations change, and we don't have to have it run out for the whole year. But fortunately, again, that's where our circuit breaker reserve comes in, because we'll have that to pull from if we have any issues with the total when we sort of have everything play out. But I think that was something I wanted to just plant the seed, that it looks, our number of placements looks good right now, but there's some other associated activities that are making those cost a little bit more than what we had budgeted. But we'll keep our eye on that, and every month, you'll get an update where we stand on that. When we talk about the budget in November, too, we will have a, we should know what our circuit break and reimbursement is going to be, and then that plays a lot into what we will be able to have available for, for the budget. I think that was the main things I wanted to cover. Any, I know it's a lot of numbers.
Dawn, what is our fiscal year? Is it the calendar year, or is it September to?
No, it's July 1st to June 30th.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, so June 30th is your close of your fiscal year. We start July 1st, which is really the summer, and there's not a lot of payroll. So September is always the big reveal as to where we're going to land when we get all the employees on the payroll and see where we are.
Got it. And then the, for example, you mentioned the tuition that went up almost 100%. Is that going to then be the baseline or the budget for 2026?
Yes and no. We may have placements that age out, and the placements may change, so we sort of almost start with a fresh slate and build on for the next year. But the placement, a lot of that is because we, we had, students go from one placement to another that was much more expensive, and additional services, because it's not only the out-of-district tuition, but we also do additional services for students that need it, home-based services, therapeutic services, and that is also, that's what's causing this a little bit as well, because we've had students who've had to add-on services for that we did not have in the budget. It's a really hard number to budget, and if we were ever on budget, I would be completely amazed, because, you know, this is a segment of your population that can fluctuate so much and have so many different changes in what they may need as students.
Got it. Thank you.
This might be a question for Dawn or Denny, but can you just remind me of the assessment tools for the math? I know there's iXL. Is that for K through five?
Yep, K through five. Then we have Math Fact Lab, which is new for this year.
Okay. Excellent. And is iXL all of the subjects?
Just math.
Just math, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
The ELA side, we have DIBELS, which is K through five, and we have a new phonics screen of PSI, it's from 95% groups. That's new.
Perfect.
And DIBELS used to just be K through two, and now it's K through five.
Excellent. Great. Thank you so much. Any questions for Dawn before we move forward? Okay. Dawn, thank you so very much. Next on the agenda item is discussion, agenda is discussion items. We don't have any discussion items tonight, so we'll move on to action items. And happy to turn it over to Allison, who will share more information about the Pine Hill School Improvement Plan.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So this is our second read of the school improvement plan, but before I dig in, I just want to share that we've had an incredible start to the school year and with so many new faces, kindergarteners, but also so many new staff. It's just, everyone's kind of meshed really well together, and I'm so proud of the hiring that we did in the spring. We have some fantastic new educators. I'm born at Pine that we did in the spring. We have some fantastic new educators on board at Pine Hill, and everyone's just really rocking it. So it's just, it's just so exciting to see the joy through the hallway and all the excitement with all the new things we have going on. So our school improvement plan broken into three goals. Our first goal centers around our MCSAS structure, so our multi tiers of systems of support. So that's just what you were speaking to, the programs that we're using to ensure that all students are receiving the interventions and the tools that need to be academically successful within our schools. The first one that let me start with is PBIS. So that's our Positive Behavior Intervention Support. So that's Piney, our new mascot, which I'm sure you all know a lot about already. But, and the three Rs, respectful, responsible, ready to grow. So that's, it's bigger than just those two items, but it's really about reinforcing and celebrating our student's success and growth in our school. And really being methodical about the way that we do that to ensure that we're supporting our students' social, emotional needs, as well as their behavioral needs. And it's a whole, a whole school buy-in. So it's not just happening in one classroom and maybe a little bit in another, but it's all teachers are really embracing this. And it's really showing in our school. And so it's exciting to see at the kid level and the adult level. The second part references the specific tools that we're using. So the, what Assistant Superintendent Conklin talked about with our DIBELS testing. So that's K through five now. So that's expanded. Our phonics screeners. We're also piloting a couple additional assessments and programs as well. So I incorporated that in there because that's a big load for teachers. And also really important that we're using the best of the best tools for our students. And we're not kind of just hodgepodgeing things together, but that we're using the best research-based practices and tools to ensure that our kids, like I said, are meeting the standards and then some. Our second goal centers around our math program. So it's kind of broken into two areas. So the first is the implementation of reveal. And that's more logistical in ways that we're supporting our educators in adopting this program. So whether that's professional development, structures for our PLC leaders, our grade level leaders, and ensuring that they're having some ownership of the program and helping support their teams as they lead their grade level teams. And then the second component is about integration of best mathematical practices. So we always talk about regardless of what program that we're using, there's always best practices. And that should be embedded deep within our math pedagogy within an elementary school. And so our coaches and our leaders are really a big part of that practice. And we are just able to focus and have an emphasis on that with the opportunity of a new math program this year. And then lastly, our school improvement, goal number three centers around communication. So as you know, we've adopted Parents Square. And it's been wonderful to see all of our educators using that tool to communicate with families. And I've heard from so many teachers around like just the use, the ease of using this tool. And some were kind of resistant, like, I always use email or just Google. And they're like, this is so much easier. And they're snapping pictures and sending it to families. I'm able to just snap a quick picture and send it to a family. And it's just such a wonderful tool to build that strong homeschool connection. And I'm seeing that across the whole building, specialists, special educators. So it's really wonderful. And then, of course, getting caregiver feedback is a big part of communication. So I'll be holding as a new principal, some conversation opportunities for families to give feedback. And I just shared, I think, a week and a half ago, my entry plan with a survey to collect feedback from all caregivers regarding, you know, what do you think is important about Pine Hill? What should I know? And that will help me shape the direction that I lead and charge Pine Hill with. Thank you.
That is a lot of activity. Thank you so very much for being so dedicated to our children. We really appreciate it. Are there any questions for Allison at this time?
I've got one, although to be honest, it might be for Denny. I'm not sure. How has the adoption been from the community with Parents Squares?
How's the, sorry, can you say it again? Adoption been?
Yeah. So are parents downloading it? Are they using it? How, are we at like 80%? Or do we have a sense of how many people have it?
I don't have the exact number. I'll have to tell them, but I'm sure Superintendent does. But the good thing about Parents Square is that you receive the communication even if you aren't signed up for it. So we're not missing families. So it's still being communicated to them, just not through like the platform itself, if that makes sense. But from what I've seen, it's been engagement in our community.
So for district-wide, K to 12, we're at 55% who are using Parents Square. Otherwise, they're relying on email, as they always have. I will get you Pine Hill in a few minutes. I'll figure out how to get back to the dashboard. But I will say, everybody got an urgent alert today for the first time. And that was just to practice what it would be like if we need to cancel school for weather, or we need to dismiss early for whatever reason. I was hopeful that that would incentivize people to sign up for Parents Square if they haven't already. So I'm hoping that 55 is higher by tomorrow.
And we're also putting out a Parents Square booth at our curriculum night on Thursday. So parents can ask questions and sign up and just promoting it that way as well. So we're hoping that that kind of ups our engagement, too.
66% of Pine Hill parents are using Parents Square.
Do we have a goal of what we want? I mean, obviously, we want to get to 100. But realistically, is there a goal that we're working towards? Is it 80? I mean, 66 is pretty good, but?
I think we've set a goal yet. You know, we are in touch with districts who have been using Parents Square, you know, for a year or two years. And it'd be interesting to see what their statistics have done over time. Again, you know, it's a parent's choice. If they choose to get the regular emails and have to sort through their email box, their inbox to find it, that's the personal choice. We don't want to push this on people. But between the positive feedback that we're hearing and again, you know, the push to get everybody on the same platform in terms of urgent communications, I'm hopeful.
Cool. And then, sorry, I have one more Parents Square question because I, I'm an adopter and I love it. Do, do, does it follow my kids year on year? So like when Dylan moves to middle school next year, whatever, like, do I have to re-opt in? Or does it, once I've done it once, it follows me forever?
It'll follow you forever. So every night, forever, ever, through graduation.
In college.
So every night, it talks to Aspen, which is our student information system and gets updates. So even if your child was to switch math classes, your child's math teacher in Parents Square would shift so that you communicate with that person moving forward.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you so much.
The one piece of feedback I'd have is to learn there's a way to give some tutorials to parents. Because even for some of my friends, they're like, I'm getting so many notifications. I get the same one through push, email, and text. How do I turn it off? And so that was the first big one, where I was like, I turn all those off and I just get pushed. And so I showed it to them. If there's like little videos or something to be like, be a smarter Parents Square user, I think it would be even more useful.
That's great feedback. Yeah. Yeah, there's so many videos and tutorials out there. So we can even incorporate some of that in our newsletters to families. It's great. Thanks.
I love that you can pay for things via Parents Square. I signed up my kids for their picture day, and I think I paid for one of them. And then I paid for one of my kids to join a math club.
Yes.
Oh, we put the, yeah, QR codes right there.
I love it. I just love it. Thank you so much. Really seeing the respectful, responsible, and ready to grow everywhere at Pine Hill, you know, like, and the students are really picking it up as well at all school meeting. It was just great. I think the teachers were handing out stickers.
The Piney stickers.
Kind of just like bolstering that effort. So it is really becoming part of the culture, which is so impressive, because I think we're three or four weeks in. So congratulations on that. And I, I know that you didn't speak about this, but I needed to shout it out. It is so nice to see High Five Fridays.
Oh, God.
They were really.
So cute, right?
It was not only cute, but it just, it shows, it was just a beautiful moment that you created to have these 18-year-old football players come amongst these tiny, tiny little kindergarteners and say, hey, this is, this is what you turn into. This is a great school system. You know, I started out where you are, and now I'm doing all of these incredible things. And I think that the, I don't want to speak on behalf of the football team, but I think the football players really enjoyed the moment, too. I think it was very important for them. It was absolutely beautiful to see.
Yeah. So we're excited about that. So every month, we'll have a new group, whether it's a music group, or a drama group, or a math club group, or another athletic group come in and high-five the kids. But they were really, it was very well received by the kiddos. They were very excited to be like, what? Who's here? Oh, my gosh.
And I think the fact that there's a new special guest each time keeps them guessing. Like, who's the special guest this week? That's wonderful. That's just great. And can you just quickly go, and I'm sure you need to plot this out a little bit more, but any thoughts or any, or any, anything that you can share about what conversation and cupcakes might look like?
Yeah. So I'm hoping to just keep it like an open forum. So essentially invite parents after an all-school meeting is my hope. And we'll start like mid to late October, early November. And just, because that's already a great group of parents that are coming, usually are takeoff time to come. And then really just give some updates and then leave it as just a conversation. So how's it going for your child? How can I support you? What feedback do you have for me? So I don't want to structure it too much, because I want families to feel like they can just share. So give it a little structure and then really leave it open-ended so that I can just be transparent about what we're working on as a school and like, how can I support their learners at home?
That's wonderful. And then maybe looking down the road, something for the parents who are unable to come to all-school meeting and things.
Yep, absolutely. And maybe some, I was thinking, hopefully, as we get the year going, doing some office hours where I can just have a window of time and people can just pop in virtually to check in. Because I know there's also a lot of families who can't attend and come in person in school.
Thank you so much. Any other questions for Principal Gilling's route before we move on?
I did have one quick question. It was about the Piney. Some kids have been bringing them home like in bunches. But what was the, what was the purpose of the Piney stickers? Which, and also, how do we make sure that essentially like everyone is getting recognized for, for their, if you will, good deeds or helping out or being responsible and things like that?
Yeah, great question. So the Piney sticker essentially is like a reinforcement. It was really important for the staff and myself that it wasn't a token economy. So you don't earn a Piney sticker and then earn points to then get a prize to then, you know, get something like that. But it's just like a moment in time that that educator, adult in the building is reinforcing something. So as simple as, oh, my gosh, you're walking down the hallway so calmly and safely with your body. Great job. Or, oh, my gosh, you shared such creative thinking during that math problem. Wow, amazing. So teachers are kind of using it like so. And again, it's just a reinforcer. Just there's excited, there's like ownership around that. And so they're showing the three R. So that's kind of the intention around it. It just kind of helps concretize for students a moment in time of something that we want to celebrate for them. As far as making sure everyone is somehow being celebrated, we're really working with the teachers to ensure like they're kind of having ownership over their class. So any adults, so, you know, Ms. Castor could be down and see a fifth grader and reinforce them. So it's not like you can only reinforce your class. But for example, like Ms. Jeffries, last Friday, every kid in her class earned a Piney sticker for all-school meetings. So we're trying to make sure there's opportunities where there's kind of like a whole class system, too, so kids can feel recognized. We're not going to do a whole track and keep track system because it's really ensuring, like, we feel like if we're doing our job, we're making sure to recognize all students. So it's, it's, it'll be a journey. And we're just ensuring, like, our teachers are just so well-equipped to ensure that they're reinforcing all of their students within their classroom and having ownership of their own students.
Did I by chance miss that there was like a message in Parents Square about what a Piney sticker was?
No, but it's coming your way soon. I just, I'm trying to figure that. No, we have a video, actually, I filmed a video today of a kid explaining what a Piney sticker is. So that's coming your way soon.
Great. I just didn't want, like, I really appreciate what you say about the not turning into an economy of like, of good deeds. And so I didn't, like, when my kids started bringing them home, I was kind of a little bit struggling with, I see they're important, but essentially, like, what happened? How did this come about? You know? And so the first thing my kids tried to do was turn it into some sort of reward system. And I think coming back and saying, hey, this isn't a reward system, but this is more of an observation system or something like that to help out parents. Because I don't know, your kids are like, my kids, as soon as they got some sort of reward, some sort of recognition, they want to turn this into, when can I get a toll? You know, and so.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was probably what you guys were going to say.
Yeah. And that's good feedback, too. So part of that, I was actually going to talk about it at curriculum night, is not only what does a Piney sticker mean? And then like, what are you as parents and caregivers, how do you respond to that? So you can say, like, ask them, like, we're going to give specific talking stands and like, just how you celebrate that moment with your child in time and then move along.
That's great. Yeah. I need, just to echo Nathaniel, like, Arvin came home and I was like, so what did you do to get it? He's like, I demonstrated the three R's. And I was like, yeah, but what was the specific thing you did? And like, he couldn't articulate that. So I think, I don't know if they're telling him, they're just like, great job, here you go. And he was like, okay, I did something. But yeah, just to, that would be a great conversation to have at home.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Any other comments? Okay. Then with that said, could I please have a motion to approve the Pine Hill School Improvement Plan as described this evening and on our second read by Allison Gilling's route?
Kristen Aberle, so moved.
Thank you, Kristen. Could I have a second?
Mia Cadiela, second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? I think we have to go through everybody. Okay. So we're just going to go through all in favor, and we're going to go one by one. So Nathaniel, yea or nay?
Yea.
Becca Hammond?
Yea.
Mika Cadiela?
Yea.
Kristen Aberle?
Yea.
Christine Walsh, yea. The motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you for everything that you're doing. It is a journey, and we're all learning. But we're learning together, which I think is, is really key. We have, moving on to the consent agenda, we have three items. And the first is to approve the district and superintendent's goals as shared by Superintendent McCoy during our September Joint Committee Meeting. Were there any questions on that before I move forward? Okay. The second item is to approve the Technology Responsible Use Agreement as reviewed by Brandon Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon Hall at our September Joint Committee Meeting. Any questions on the Technology Responsible Use Agreement before we move forward?
I have one. And maybe this is pedantic, but we've been having this conversation at my house a lot when we, once we open Roblox. There's, one of the lines on here is, I will let a teacher or parent know before contacting someone online I don't already know. Do we want to make that, like, I won't contact someone, or I will ask a teacher or a parent? Or is that, I don't know, what do you guys think? It just feels like that's something we've been hitting really hard. Like, if you don't know someone in person, don't do this. I don't know.
Well, I think at school, it's a little bit easier to control because we do not have their email turned on at the elementary level. And we control who they can, what apps and platforms they can communicate with. So we can actually make that the case.
Prevent it.
I wonder if perhaps the committee would then want to consider taking out the word "parents" and leave that to the parents at home. And you can certainly use that language when you make your own agreements, or you can leave that in.
Yeah, because this is like, I'm just going to let you know I'm doing it versus asking a parent for permission or, yeah, that's.
Or, or to your point, like, if they can't do this, do we, at the elementary level, do we need this in the elementary version if it's been adapted from the older kids?
I would argue the sooner that they learn that rule, the better, even though they're not capable of doing it at the elementary, just to get it in their brains that they shouldn't be contacting someone they don't know without telling a trusted adult or asking permission or?
I think, and strong opinion loosely held, I would love to see this say, I will ask a teacher before contacting someone online I don't already know versus telling them or letting them know. But if you guys think it's, it's too specific, I'm, I'm not strongly committed to that.
So to you, you can approve that with a change if you want, or leave it as is?
Great point, Becca. Thank you so much for that thoughtful comment. The only other thing that we have tonight in terms of the consent agenda is to approve the meeting minutes from our June 2024 Sherborne School Committee Meeting. Were there any edits that anyone needed to make on that document? Okay, hearing none. Could I please have a motion from the Sherborne School Committee to approve, hold on a second, to approve the district and superintendent's goals to approve with the amendment, with the amendment of asking a teacher or parent on the Tech Responsible Use Agreement and to approve the meeting minutes from our June 2024 School Committee Meeting?
Kristen Aberle, so moved.
Thank you, Kristen. Can I have a second, please?
Mia Cadiela, second.
Thank you, Mika. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. We're going to go through this again. All in favor. Nathaniel Jackson?
Yea or nay?
Yea.
Thank you, Nathaniel. Becca Hammond, yea or nay?
There's a huge bug in my house. Yea.
Thank you, Becca. Thank you, Becca. Careful of the bugs. Megacadiala?
Yea.
Thank you. Oh, the fly swatters.
I'm prepared.
Yes. Kristen Aberley? Yea or nay? Thank you, Kristen. And Christine Walsh, yea. Motion passes?
It's been a long day.
It's been a long day. Becca's ready, though. Becca's prepared for anything. And just informational items for members, in your packet you will find the Sherborne School Committee Subcommittee Assignments. Thank you to everyone who has signed up for various roles this upcoming year. I just want to note that the school committee members give so much of their time and energy and dedication as it is. I am so excited to hear about how you all are going above and beyond and performing in these wonderful liaison roles. I look forward to highlighting this work at future school committee meetings, both so, you know, we can hear about the wonderful things that are going on in the community and, and the roles that you're playing in helping them move forward. So thank you all for that.
Christine, sorry to interrupt you. I think that the one in the packet is not updated.
Yes, Don, yes.
Okay, perfect.
I, I shared with Diane the, the correct up-to-date chart. Thank you for noting that. And additionally, we have the Dover School Committee Meeting Minutes from May 13th, 2024, and the Dover Sherborne Regional School Committee Minutes from March 20, 2024 and May 7th, 2024. Any, yes.
Can I ask a question about the liaisons? Do you want us to reach out to?
Yes, please. Yes, that would be great. Items, Megga had a great question in terms of the liaison roles. Should we be reaching out to our respective subcommittee groups? And the answer is yes. If you need any help in identifying a point person, please reach out to me. I'm happy to make a connection. Looking for items for the October 15 meeting? Feel free to email me any items that you have for that agenda. I think historically we have the CSA come. Irene and Cara could come and just give a wonderful overview of what's going on, if you wouldn't mind helping out with that. But if there are any other items, please do reach out to me. And is there anything else on top of anyone's mind tonight before I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll just add, in my absence at your October meeting, we'll put on there an agenda item for budget guidance because that'll be your opportunity to share anything that you want to see incorporated into the budget that we presented in November. So be thinking about that and Beth and Denny can pass that along to our budget building